Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for coming. At this time, I will call the Tuesday, April 14th, City Council meeting and public hearings to order. And I would ask that you rise for our invocation, followed by the pardon of the reasons.
May I ask, Baron, would you give the verification?
Yes, sir. Father, we come here exactly now to say thank you for another day. Most of all, Lord, we thank you for your son who gave us life that we might have not come on days like this. Now, Lord, as we begin this meeting, we would ask you to come in time with us, be here, direct us, help us not lean down, understand. Lord, we pray that you would just give us the knowledge to do what you would have us to do for this city of Hartsfield. We give you all our own praise. You best to listen, you ain't nothing but a liar.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, universal, and just for all. Thank you. Please be seated. At this time, the chair will entertain a motion, a way of reading, and approve the minutes of Tuesday, March 10th, right in the City Council meeting. If you have a -- Fall in favor, signify by saying aye. Close by nay. Mission carries. Item four on our agenda, we have proclamations this evening. We have one that is not here yet, so we're going to hold that one over. The second, do we have anyone here from proclamation for fair housing month?
I think it's Mary Catherine.
Okay. So this is declaring the month of April as Fair Housing Month. I'll read to you very quickly. Whereas every year, the Housing Urban Development proclaims the month of April as Fair Housing Month to commemorate the anniversary of the passage of the Fair Housing Act of 1968. Whereas the state of South Carolina enacted the South Carolina Fair Housing Law in 1989, which guarantees the right of every person to live where they choose, regardless of their race, color, national origin, sex, religion, familial status, or disability. And whereas the state of South Carolina will certify each year that it will affirmatively further fair housing in local governments as a condition of receiving community development block grant funds, must certify to the state and to the HUD that they will take proactive steps to affirmatively further fair housing. And whereas the city of Hartsfield desires that all its citizens be afforded the opportunity to attain a decent, safe, and sound environment. And that is something we have worked very hard towards. So, Mary Catherine? Present this to you.
It's a requirement of grant that we currently have.
I figured it wasn't her personal.
Right.
So we'll hold off on the other. And item B on the agenda is the Hartsfield Chamber Annual Update, which is submitted in your packets.
No, it's here.
And quarters here.
Sure.
You did -- is that in our packets?
It is not.
Okay.
As it was just written a hour ago, so.
Oh.
But I'd be happy to provide it for you.
Sure. So you want to take a moment and give us the update report, please?
I would love to. Thank you for having me this evening. It looks like I have a lot to say, but it's just kind of pretty busy today. At the Chamber, we are completing our membership renewal season right now, and we have seen a clear trend. People are excited to do business in Hartsfield. We had 19 businesses or nonprofits join the Chamber since I began in October, and our renewal rate for existing membership is nearing 90 percent. We introduced a program called the 110% Club in January, in which we asked members to contribute an extra 10% in voluntary membership fees to gain extra promotional leverage on both online -- promotional leverage, both online and at our events. Participation in similar programs at other chambers hovers around 50 percent. Our participation right here at Hartsfield Chamber is 72 percent in 110% Club. We're also working on instituting a Chamber Ambassador Program that will help in member retention and recruiting. Members are seeing the value not only in joining the Chamber, but in joining the network of professionals and business people that live and work in Hartsfield. Not only have we seen a jump in membership, but we've also experienced an increase in member participation. We have several ribbon cuttings and open houses on the calendar, and we expect this to continue through the summer and on into 2016. Businesses and nonprofits are eager to meet each other, network, and grow their relationships with the Hartsfield community. There's nothing more exciting to me as Chamber President than to see so many of our members be this engaged. We are working to support their efforts, and we would tremendously be grateful to all of you if you would join us in this mission. When city officials take the time to visit with business owners at ribbon cuttings or an open house, it's not just a nice gesture, it's a symbol of unity. We want to show our business leaders that we are with them, and that we're just excited for them to be in business as they are. And I can't tell you how much I appreciate the fact that I can always count on City Council to attend our ribbon cuttings. It means a lot to the business owners, and it means a lot to me personally. With that said, I hope to see you at the following events over the next few weeks. The Rotary Club's Business After Hours is this Thursday from 5:30 to 7:00 at the Fair Building in Hartsfield, here, right at Conde's. Southern Greens of South Carolina is holding a ribbon cutting on April 23rd at 5:30 at the Landmark Inn. That's also the same night as the Black Party, so if you can hit the ribbon cutting at 5:30 at the Landmark.
What Southern Greens is?
The Southern Greens of South Carolina is owner Lisa Suggs. She sells golf packages to tourists.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
She brings in a lot of money from out of town.
Really? These are all on your calendar, so I know some of you are trying to print them clearly right now.
Oh, my bad.
It's okay. They're on their calendar.
Okay, good. So they're there, so you have them, but we would love to have you there. The Hartsfield Community Center will hold a ribbon cutting on April 27th at 5:30 at 705 Butler Street. Founder Dorothy Hines, who I've just grown to just have so much respect for, is a community here in South Hartsfield, and her organization works hard to provide services, much needed services to our senior citizens. Hartsfield Animal Hospital has come under new ownership as Dr. McPassell's retired, so Doctors -- I hope I don't mess his name up too cheeky. And Ryan James have joined the long list of individuals who have invested in Hartsfield recently, and they're excited to meet their new community. So they're going to have an open house on May 16th from 1:00 to 3:00. And then finally, this is the big news, we're gearing up for the Taste of Hartsfield on May 7th. I'm excited to say that we're holding a taste at the Hartsfield Country Club this year. The Country Club is truly an ideal venue for an upscale food festival with the outdoor beauty of the club's grounds, an indoor full-service bar, and an easy rank contingency in case the weather doesn't cooperate, which it hasn't for the past few years. So if we need to just pick it all up and move it inside. Tickets are more strong so far. I'm really excited about that. We're expecting a great turnout for the event. We've had added an outreach component this year, which has just been kind of decided last night in our meetings, so we're really trying to get the promotion out. But this is going to come in the form of our revamped People's Choice Awards for Best Chef. Guests will be able to purchase ballots for $1 each and vote as often as they want for the Best Chef. And 100 percent of the proceeds of the ballot sales will be donated to Carolina kids to help feed and provide necessities for the children of Hartsfield. So that's pretty exciting. I'm really happy about that. We're bringing value to our members in many different ways. We have started focusing on giving women in business the tools they need to be successful. We formed a Women in Business Advice Board that is comprised of successful Hartsfield businesswomen, and together we've coordinated a plan to deliver -- that will deliver useful programming through networking, education, of course, we'll include our Halloween celebration in September. And I'd like to begin a similar program for our small business event in 2016, as that's lacking. We don't have a lot of small business support right now, programming. The Chamber is also working to be a better advocate for our business community and legislative arena. We belong to the State Chamber, who advocates for our businesses on a state level, and I do my best to represent the needs and wants of our businesses on a local level. We hosted a state legislative breakfast in January, and we'll be hosting a local legislative reception on March -- oh, sorry, October 15th, so, in which we'll be inviting county council and county administrator, and of course, our city government, all of you will be invited to participate. This will also give our members an opportunity to talk with you about their concerns. In closing, we're working hard to provide quality services to our members in the community. My goal is to bring the Chamber to a new level of support that will encourage business growth and success, which in turn will bring more success to Hartsfield. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, and congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you for having me.
Wonderful list of accomplishments in such a short period of time.
Thank you. Great. Thank you all again for your support. Thank you.
Okay. Item five on the agenda, the manager's update in your April calendar, which is in your packets.
Right. There's a lot on there. There's also a couple of other things that have been handed out. Fletcher, with Hampton Inn and Suites, would like to take you all on a behind-the-scenes tour. Russell even got to go on the roof, I think, and maybe got a little scared. So if you'd like to do that, Fletcher can -- just give Fletcher a call, and she'll take you on a behind-the-scenes tour of Hampton Inn. Also, Saturday, April 25th, is a cleanup in South Hartsfield. You have a flyer right here. Help us get the word out, please. I just sent an email today, but Crema, a new coffee shop in town, their grand opening in ribbon cuttings at 10 o'clock this Friday. We would love for you to join us with that if you can. And Raucho's plans a grand opening next week, but we don't have a date nailed down yet, so I will send that out as soon as we have it. What do you think? Suzie, Tuesday-ish?
Not Monday, ever.
Not Monday. But maybe by Tuesday, they'll be ready to open over at Coffee's.
What time is Friday?
Also, Friday is at 10:00. And just to remind, we have a special meeting a week from today, 5:30. There'll only be a couple lines on the agenda, but we will also have an executive session to discuss issues, so those have your wives or husbands, that you'll be home in 30 minutes, because it might take a little bit longer next Tuesday night than normal because of our executive session you have planned. Pinwheel proclamation, I passed out a press release on that just a little while ago as well. Casey Copeland is supposed to be there, he's not here yet, but we will be working with some kids at Pride Park at 3:30 next Tuesday, planting some pinwheels for Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month, and also have refreshments. We'll have car trucks, police cars, and a couple of speakers out there to talk with the kids, so I hope you can join us for that as well. And let's see what else we had. Suzie is awesome. She had the best farmer's market ever on Saturday, if you weren't able to come, yeah, The vendors, when we were cleaning up, all of them said they made more money and had more business on Saturday than they'd ever had at a marketplace. So moving into Caroline Avenue definitely made a big impact, and we'll continue that next month. And South Carolina Community Development Association, they are coming, I sent an email about this as well, but they're coming to Hartsfield, Lake City, and Florence to see everything we have going on downtown. They will be in Hartsfield on May 13th, 3 o'clock here in Council Chambers, going a walking tour downtown, and then a dinner that evening, or section and dinner at Black Forest. Council is invited to attend that section. I just need to know who's coming, because we have to pay for dinner that evening. You don't register, you won't be attending the entire conference, just the part where you're in Hartsfield. So I have that highlighted, the parts that everyone's invited to. And Mary Catherine, you want to talk to them about the park grant?
So we talked about this last night, but just following up, if you'll remember, June is the close of SCPRD's fiscal year, that's they do all their clothes out then. So if we're applying, it needs to happen in time for it to make its peak cutoff. So what needs to happen before then is y'all appoint someone or any combination of you to reach out to our senator and representative to solicit their support and make sure that they are okay with us applying, because if you remember, this is the grant that they have to submit the application for. So I just, if we can, or y'all can right now, elect amongst yourselves someone to approach.
This is for orders? Or you want many? No, no, no.
You've passed a resolution supporting this, but never appointed someone to speak with them about it.
Okay. So we'll get to that in just a second.
Okay, and I'll be happy to meet with whoever is willing to debrief and what their requirements are.
Okay. All right. Okay. Anything else?
Casey's here, if you want to do the proclamation.
So, yes, sir?
We also have Ronald Crine here with the director of DSS in Hartsfield.
Yeah.
With me, and any other child service agencies there present.
Okay. Would y'all all like to come up? So this is a proclamation declaring the month of April Child Abuse Prevention Month. I know this has been a conversation that the community has been working on for quite some time regarding the safety of children. Darnell Fearsom helps to buy this, one of those people who spearheaded this, and it goes without saying that Casey, this has been pretty close to your wheelhouse of causes that you've been really championing lately, as child abuse prevention goes very hand-in-hand with what you've been working on. Ron, it's always good to see you as well.
See you.
Yeah. Russell? It's good to see you as well. Yeah, so I wasn't going to read it, because I figured you both wanted to maybe say an award or two, but just for everyone's benefit, I wanted to present you both with the proclamation. If we need to get these separate copies, we certainly can do that. But this is declaring April Child Abuse Prevention Month. Gosh, it's like all the words are just coming together, so I think that's for you. And y'all want to take a moment to address council? We'd love to have you.
I just wanted to say, on behalf of the Department of Social Services, we actually have two campaigns going on right now with regard to provincial abuse this month. One is about the dangers of shaking a baby, and the second is the ABCs of safe sleep. I have a few brochures here, both kinds, if anyone's interested in those. How many of you know the ABCs of safe sleep for infants? A, alone. B, on their back. C, in their crib without a bunch of stuff in the crib that would smother them. So we're going to have some of these available next week when we have the get-together for the public, but I'll leave a few here with Natalie if y'all want some.
Yeah, please, or give it to the clerk if you would, and if you'll also get her the information about your event that you're having, serving you our best to.
Wait, I just passed out a question list about the event.
Oh, perfect. Here, I'm there.
And I'll just say thank you to the city of Hartsfield, thank you to the council for this proclamation. I think that child safety is one of those things that doesn't belong to just one organization, non-private, or governmental agency. Thank all of us working together to keep our kids safe, so just thank you for this. I'm vested, because I have a three-year-old daughter, and I used to work with DSS, so it's something I'm passionate about, but thank you.
Well, I tell you, the proclamation is a piece of paper, and this is not your full-time job, and I think you're vested for more reasons than just your daughter. I think you've got a pretty big heart, and I think you've demonstrated all year long your commitment to causes like this. So just want to say, on behalf of the city, not to leave you out for the run, but we're certainly proud to call you one of our home-down sons, so keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Not to mention, you've got a reputation, you know, that you're the Citizen of the Year.
Right.
But it's well-deserved in both cases, so thank you both for taking the time to come, and I look forward to seeing you at your event.
Thanks.
Do you mind if we take a picture? I'd like to take a picture of her.
So I dodged Russell, because I didn't wear my jacket. But I'll roll down my sleeves if you guys want to. Actually, if you want.
They're going to probably make a copy.
Ron, Casey, they wanted to take a photograph real quick, if you guys don't want to.
Sure.
Please. May I have you grab the proclamation on? Thank you, sir. You want to split on one side, and we'll take a picture with y'all. I don't see you. Okay. Thank you for your patience with that. The next item, Madam Manager, you don't have anything further?
No.
Items on the consent agenda will be received as information without objection and approved. Moving on to unfinished business, item six on the agenda, the public hearing and final reading of ordinance 4193, if the manager will publish the ordinance.
An ordinance to authorize the exception to transfer ownership of property located at 712 South Eighth Street, tax map number 056-14-01-027, to the city of Hartsfield.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion. We amend the agenda to move this to after executive session, item 14.5. There's a motion on the floor to amend the agenda to move item six, the public hearing and final reading of ordinance 4193, to item 14.5, for reasons of receiving legal advice as they are second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. If those are nay, the agenda stands amended. Moving on to new business, item seven on the agenda, the first reading of ordinance 4194, if the manager will publish the ordinance.
An ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of waterworks and sewer system revenue bonds of the city of Hartsfield, South Carolina, and other matters related
Okay, you've heard the first reading of ordinance 41. At this time, the chair will entertain any motions for ordinance 4194. Mr. Mayor, make a motion. We pass ordinance 4194.
Right.
Is there any discussion? Hearing in all favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed by nay, first reading of ordinance 4194 is passed. Item eight on the agenda, first reading of ordinance 4195, if the manager will publish.
An ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of waterworks and sewer system improvement and refunding revenue bonds, being designated Series 2015, in the principal amount not exceeding $12 million of the city of Hartsfield, South Carolina, and other matters related thereto.
Okay, you've heard the first reading of ordinance 4195. At this time, the chair will entertain any motions. Mr. Mayor, make a motion. We pass ordinance 4195. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on ordinance 4195? Hearing in all favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay, the house has had. Item nine on the agenda, first reading of ordinance 4196, if the manager will publish the ordinance.
An ordinance to authorize the purchase by the city of property within tax map parcel number 056-06-02-109, located on the corner of Railroad Avenue and Fourth Street in Hartsfield, South Carolina, at 29550, consisting of .69 acres.
Okay, you've heard the reading of ordinance 4196. Chair will entertain any motions.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we pass ordinance 4196.
Present. Motion and second, is there any discussion? Hearing in all favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay, ordinance passes first reading. Item 10 on the agenda, first reading of ordinance 4197, if the manager will publish the ordinance.
An ordinance to amend Hartsfield City Code of the Day zoning, Article 9, District Regulation Section 6, B2, B3, the business zone, by the addition of Section 32, self-service storage facilities, subsections A through E.
You've heard the reading, first reading of ordinance 4197. At this time, the chair will entertain any motions.
Mayor, I make a motion that we pass ordinance 4197.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Counsel.
Well, where is this going to be? I mean, I'm looking at pictures.
This will be in the B2, B3 business zone?
What are we talking about, man?
Well, specifically, it would be allowable in the entirety of the zone. There is an applicant that is asking for a tax amendment on where his property is specifically. I am not sure, Madam Manager, if you confirm that?
It's Bob.
The New Dance Academy, right across from Car Wash, is one of them. And it's strictly indoor mayor, and climate control, no outdoor, and I spoke to Mr. Lavender, and it's upscale. The pictures in your packet are just examples of other indoor shows. There's not so much of Gilem that we.
My gentleman was trying to find out what we were talking about.
Mary Catherine has the map, so she can show B2, B3.
Yeah, let's, so before we get into that, Mary Catherine. Sorry. Let's do this. So Baroness, Baroness, let me make sure that he understands what we're talking about. So specifically, he's allowing, he's asking for a tax amendment, which will allow for indoor storage anywhere in the B2, B3 district? Pink and blue?
B2 is the Carolina blue, and the B3 is pink.
But, you know, his interest is in the building, one of them is in the building that we just described, Bob just described, across from the Car Wash. The other, again, was square, Bob?
That's one more. I don't know where that's from.
Which Car Wash is it? On Carolina.
Car Wash in Carolina, Bob, at Pride Park.
Is that Fox Street? Fox and Howard. Oh, this is B2. We haven't talked about, thank you.
Another light pink.
Okay.
It's B2.
Yeah, down Fifth Street. One, two, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Here, I can check. Okay. Okay.
Would it be allowable?
Yeah, I mean, what about?
It's not on Paul Street.
I'm going to have to check here, but that is on Paul Street.
No, so all of the shaded areas that B1, B2, B3? Excuse me. B2, B3, it would be allowable anywhere in that area? So Paul Street, it would be allowable?
Most of Carolina.
You want to take a look at that? Madam Clerk, if you could, whether this passes first reading or not, if you could please issue to the council personal copies of the zones without all of the other zones in it, if you could arrange for that for each council member, that might help better.
It's on my condition, I don't know where they're going. That's what I'm trying to figure out, where they're going.
Yeah, so.
I've had a lot of paint.
It's a lot of paint.
I want to know exactly where all that paint is, because when you start putting up all these things, I want to know where they're going. And it's no more right for me, you know, you know?
Yes, sir.
So I would like to know. Absolutely. Not that I have objection, but I do like to know where they're going, absolutely.
And if this does approve, is approved tonight, we cannot have second reading until May, but we will not have that time to do it for next week, because it requires 15 days notice in the paper, so you do have some time to look at the map before the next reading.
And it was brought forth for planning.
Unanimously approved by planning as a recommendation to council.
Which is interesting, because when I was on planning, they unanimously, were you on planning with me then?
I was on plan, but I know it came up.
It came up, which was the other way unanimously, so it's interesting to see the change in, you know.
I think this was a good use, that the indoor nitro and everything.
Oh, I think it was controlled. Yeah.
I think it was a good use. And I mean, if you just know where it is and what it's going to look like.
Yeah.
I don't want you to, one of them struck up in it, because I can ride down highways and I see all these things.
I think.
I can ride all down Carolina Avenue, or on home, and I can still see the same thing. I don't want that all the time.
All right, so there is a motion on the floor. Baroness, if there's any further discussion, it's just. It's just the comment that the red section in your, on your second page of the ordinance is additional verbiage that has been added to define and delineate where this, these facilities can be located. Is there any, is planning here?
No, no one is planning here.
Okay.
It's quite a lot, Mayor, to look at the verbiage and not be able to see the map at the same time. And not knowing what teams were, how many facilities it could be.
So, there's a, there's a motion and a second on the floor. We're in discussion if you wish to move to carry over. Certainly needs to be expressed, otherwise we're going to end discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we carry over until we receive the map.
Second.
And we, uh, we had to read the script and put the map together.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor to carry over. Ordinance forty-one ninety-seven, motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion to carry over forty-one ninety-seven? Hearing in all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay?
Nay.
All right, so is the opinion of the chair in that the motion to carry over passes? Y'all looking at me funny.
Well, I may think that just.
No, you're not looking funny. They were looking at me funny. We've got a parliamentary question mark hanging over some heads here. Tell me what you're thinking. Motion to, motion to carry over, can't supersede the motion?
I have the issue.
On the floor? Isn't that right? Isn't that right?
You're right.
Okay, so we're good?
Going to carry over to?
Next meeting. Yeah. Yeah, so carry over is the next. We're going to carry over to the April, when we come back. Technically, carry over is the next meeting of the same. We don't do it against this act to a week, we do not. Yes, we've got a special meeting next.
As long as I get the information, I'll see the map. And really, I don't have an objection. I just want to see where it's on, really, because, uh, and that's my thing. I don't have an objection to what folks are doing. But I do like to know where they're, where they're putting.
Mr. Mayor, while I have the minutes, and it's been a motion and second to carry this first reading over to the special meeting next week on the twenty-first of October, maps will be ready providing the Plowworks tomorrow.
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, so first reading of ordinance forty-one ninety-seven is carried over. Item eleven on the agenda, resolution four dash fifteen dash oh one, approval of a bid award for the Host Hotel for the two thousand and fifteen Dixie Ponytails World Series. Mr. Mayor, make a motion to pass ordinance, excuse me, resolution oh four fifteen oh one.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? So, um, for the record, the chair recuses himself from vote. My father owns stock in the Landmark Inn, and I just am now aware that they're awarded the bid. So, I'm going to recuse myself. Madam Clerk, if you'll draw that up and write it, we'd like to sign it. And the mayor pretend will now take charge. All right, we have a motion and a second on resolution oh four fifteen oh one. Is there any discussion? Hearing in all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. There is no objection or no, excuse me, resolution oh four fifteen oh one. Thank you, sir. Item twelve on the agenda, resolution four dash fifteen dash oh two, approval to change the membership fee structure of the Coach TB Thomas Sports Center from a monthly fee to a daily fee. Resolution four dash fifteen dash oh two in your package. Then chair will entertain any motions. Next, Mayor, I make a motion to pass resolution oh four fifteen oh two. There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Please.
The amount right now that's being charged is ten dollars per month. That's for in-city.
That's for students.
That's for students.
Yes, ma'am.
In-city, and what about county?
Fifteen.
Fifteen for county. What is going to be the increase with the two dollars per day? What would it take it to?
Uh, my father, what would it take?
What would the cost go to from ten dollars a month to two dollars per day?
They have that. They can do a monthly fee for ten dollars or fifteen, or they can do a daily fee of two or three dollars depending on the county.
So, they can do either or?
They can do either or, yes, ma'am.
Any further discussion?
I just wanted to make sure, um, I see it looks like we're having some trouble with students trying to sneak in a plan that forgot their card.
That's correct.
I just don't want, um, the children that do have their cards, I don't want their rates increased because of the actions of others. But there's a way we could look at, um, identifying the children that don't have their cars or how many times they're coming and not having their cars and how many times you haven't been looked up.
There's a constant repeat of those that walk in, especially after hours when we're just supervisors there, and the supervisors do not know the traffic that we see. So, they say, well, go on in this time. And it's gotten to where they just really taking advantage of us. And then they'll say that I'm coming in, I just went to drink water, I'm going to the bathroom, and all of a sudden, the girls at the front counter get busy, and all of a sudden, that person is in playing basketball. And it is a membership. So, I spoke with Dylan, who had the same concerns that we did, and they actually said that the group improved and grew and actually generated additional, much more revenue than the monthly fees. So, I thought we would try it and see what would happen.
So, explain to council then the justification for increasing the fee.
The wording is a little. The wording is a little, it just gives you a choice, Mayor. You can pay ten bucks, or you can pay as you go and pay two bucks every time you come. Because sometimes a lot of these children don't have ten dollars on them or whatever. But two dollars at a time doesn't seem as significant as you can offer at one time.
Exactly.
Yeah. But they have the choice still.
I would change the title of the resolution. It doesn't read.
Didn't read.
Frank Corrigan.
Yes.
And also has another report here that needs to be revised. Amendment. For basketball only at Coach TB Thomas Sports Center to add a daily fee. Then you're not taking away the monthly.
Nay, it's just, it's just for basketball. It's just for basketball.
Could we try lost card?
We, yes, ma'am, we have tried that. And it doesn't work. It just doesn't work.
Well, so the one thing that I guess, um, you know, I'm learning as a parent, not a new parent, but a learning parent, is I'm really bad about that, you know? When I tell my daughter something, if I've been the rule one time, it gets bent all the time. And so, you know, it seems that there's a liability issue if it's a membership. If the YMCA lets me in and I don't have my card and something happens and I'm not a member, do I increase my liability there? That would be one concern I would have. And the other is if we're saying just this one time, then we're opening the floodgates for anybody to do it. It should be a, if it's a black or white policy, then, you know, if you have it, you've got it. If you don't, you can't come in.
That's what we're trying to do is close, is to close that gate so that we don't have that problem anymore.
Right, yeah, that's, my question is how does changing the daily fee help that out?
A lot of, a lot of kids can't come up with ten dollars per month, but they can, they can come.
I get that, I get the finances part of it, but it seems like two different issues. One doesn't solve the other. Are you saying that the people that don't have their card on are more apt to hand you two dollars just to get membership?
Exactly.
So, membership is not something you apply for?
No.
It's just on a pay-per-use basis?
It's a pay-per-use. And they, they get a, they're not joining for multiple months, so they don't get the card with the picture on it. So, they come in with their ticket, I'm a member, you go in the gym, and then thirty minutes later comes running out, oh, I made you get my phone, and he comes back in and says, I'm back. And then all of a sudden, here comes another kid with his ticket, says, I'm a member. And it just goes, it's a revolving door situation. And so.
So, I'm not, you just made the problem a little more complex. I'm not sure that we solved that problem either. I hand you two bucks, you give me a ticket. I walk out and come and go as often as I please. I can hand my ticket to the next kid coming through the door?
It's, it's not solving the problem, but it's trying to control the problem.
I think our policy, our procedures, the procedure is how you can carry out policy. And council sets the policy, and then, you know, Mr. Gardener, we set the procedure as to how to carry out policy.
It's not a perfect system, but it's, it's, the system has been tried in another, another city, and we're going to try it also.
Just say it's two dollars every time you come in.
Every time.
If you want to go in and try to poke this, poke this, and you leave, and I'm back in, two more bucks.
Exactly. And we, and we have to be diligent about watching the front, making sure that they don't go back and forth. It's just, at times the phone ringing and the girls get busy, and it happens. But it's happening more and more. Bob is a supervisor at the gym on some nights, and he's sitting first hand. And actually, it's something he and I have talked about, and.
I'll ask you a question.
Real quick, staff is probably, we want to carry this over because we have something we've just been discussing. Um, also, I have an issue right now. I don't know about liability issues because if they're under eighteen, their parents would have to sign some type of waiver.
We have a rule.
We can carry this over to next Tuesday. That would be helpful for, for us.
Okay, so Bob, you want to weigh in on it real quick while we're discussing?
It's like Phil said, we can tweak it, just like splash pads, if they wear the little bracelet, Mayor, if they go out. Because if you tear those off, then that's kind of a done deal.
I like the bracelet, I do not want.
We hadn't really come up with exactly how we're going to identify. Because I did mention to Phil, or he and I talked, if you exit the doors, you're paying another charge.
Exactly.
If you do that at a lot of sporting events or movie theaters or whatever, you do have to pay a separate admission charge. But we didn't want to punish the kid like if he did want to go out and have his mom and dad, that he was going to play another hour or whatever. We were just trying to work it out where it was fair. Yeah.
I like the idea of.
We've got armbands, we can put an armband on, and you can't transfer others.
Yeah, I think that's, so that was, you know, the ticket thing certainly can solve the problem.
No, we didn't. We are, we are banned, and we can change the colors.
Yep.
But about some action.
Oh, you know, um, this group, council, I, you know, I have a hangup with this. We, we talk about recreation, it's, it's underfunded, it's in jeopardy now in the budget discussions in the county. You know, what is, what is the intent of what we're trying to do? Because I understand, you know, I understand the plight of staff, that we're getting some kids in sometimes that calls trouble. And charging may alleviate that, and it may not. But in my mind, I'd rather have those kids playing basketball than doing something else. So, I struggle with that decision to charge. We don't charge for anything else, with the ability of this splash bag.
Flashback reasons.
What, no, I'm telling you, if I go to, if I go to the park and I go to play tennis, I play tennis, I don't get charged.
But that's a public court.
Well, this is a public court.
It's a public court with, with memberships, though.
Well, so, that's the part I struggle with. I don't understand why it should be different. So, it goes into the longstanding discussion of, you know, does this warrant, we need to have outdoor facilities for basketball? Where, you know, it is public because everybody's paying tax dollars to use it. I understand the reason for charging for the membership for the fitness part is because of programming. You know, we have to, I guess, pay teachers and stuff like that. But for free play, I just, I personally struggle with that. And I, and I understand both sides.
We can't, Mayor, we cannot have free play. We just cannot. We would have to have lots of police department in there with us.
And so, what, what I just heard you say is, and I appreciate it greatly, we can't have it successfully unless we do this. So, we can do it, but there are parameters, and maybe, maybe we're approaching it from a policy perspective the wrong way. Maybe we do need to have, you know, security to, but be inclusive of everybody. Minus the financial burden, you know, I keep thinking, where would I have been today had I had to go to somewhere and pay money that I didn't have because I'm not working yet, I'm in high school? You know, I just, I think it sends the wrong message. And I'm not disagreeing with you, I know you're, I know.
It's all the city of Hartsville people.
No, and I, and so I struggle with that as well.
Get people from anywhere coming.
Yeah, so my, my, um, my other struggle is how do we keep coming up with these fees for in-city, out-of-city? It, I would almost de-annex my property to not have to pay the taxes, to pay a dollar more for whatever we go to, splash bags, you know, basketball halls.
Exactly.
Because there's, I mean, I'm not making up the gap. And that's a tough thing because, you know, you want Hartsville to be inclusive for all people, but the reality is the people that are paying for all of these facilities are the people that live in the city, and we're double taxing them. And I struggle with that as well. I'd be fine if the kids that live in Hartsville, you know, didn't have to pay, but everybody that lived outside of it paid the two dollars. That's a better way.
In a perfect world, that would be great, but unfortunately, and it's been tried many, many times, and it just, it just doesn't work.
No, I don't, I mean, it sort of comes with its challenges.
It does.
I don't have the, the answers, but I'm personally, I'm just letting council know, I struggle with the conversation that we're having for those reasons. And I know some of you do, and some of you don't agree, but it's a discussion that is going to present itself. Not to change the topic, but I had a conversation this morning about Magnolia Cemetery. And a lady who I won't name because she didn't come tonight, she was trying to come, was concerned because we're not budgeting enough for weed control out there. It's one of our parks, and it's one of our, our more expensive parks to maintain. And I told her that's council's fault because we set the budget. And she said, you know, I can go talk to, somebody told me to talk to Phil Gardner, and I said, well, that's not Phil Gardner's fault. Phil will do whatever you tell him, but he's going to say, where does the money come from? Council's duty is to allocate, I mean, to allocate budget dollars and say, here's your grounds and maintenance fee, Phil, go contract to have it sprayed, right? Incidentally, it is being sprayed just because Marian is spraying it kind of, you know, it's not in her contract to do that, but she's doing it, she cares about it. But the, the interesting point was the lady out there didn't live in the city, but her expectations were that it should be maintained, and why aren't the tax dollars going to do that? And it gets back to that same conversation that we've had universally. How do you protect the people that are providing for a better way of life in Hartsville? Not disenfranchise the people that are coming from outside of Hartsville that need, you know, depend on it to, to live, but not, not mess up the taxpayer. And all of you are those, you know, taxpayers. It's a conversation we need to have sooner rather than later. All in so far.
Budget, each department present a budget to the city?
Yes, sir.
For what they think it will take to maintain?
Yes, sir.
Those cemeteries or what else?
Um, so, yes, they do, but so, you know, that process is happening right now. I mean, we sat through every department head's budget. And the way we got to a balanced budget proposal that we're going to give to council is you have to cut something, and so what gets cut? Well, I mean, maybe the, the money to go spray for the cemetery gets cut. Maybe it doesn't. Maybe we cut a police officer, right? And then you start to get into the conversation of which is more important? Public safety, you know, appearance, parks, I mean, you could cut a number of things. So, the finance committee felt like we, we found the things in the budget that were paramount to safety, and we put maybe beauty and maintenance on hold a little bit. And council will have the option to vote on that full budget. So, for example, if you feel like the cemeteries need to have that budget, we can certainly amend and vote on it. But it comes with the risk of raising taxes.
Bringing back to, I guess, the recreation center, TB Thomas Center, I'd be interested to know how much revenue those memberships for basketball on monthly per day bring in? those memberships for basketball are monthly, or per day, day bring in, and it might, you know, give us a little dish.
Can we bring this to the finance committee on Thursday, we have a meeting, and then maybe come back next Tuesday with a recommendation from the finance committee?
I would like, I, I'd like to, you know, I, I, I like at least this discussion going here, when you take it to a finance committee, I don't get all of it. I want it all, I want it all, just like we're discussing here.
Yeah, so we can do that, but what she's, what she's recommending is.
I understand what she's.
We're not having one this Thursday.
I understand what she's recommending.
Well, then, you know, if you want to bring it to all council, we can, we have no problem with that, we're just trying to hash out the numbers, give, um, we need to give Phil enough time, or whomever, to pull that data so we can study it, but, um, Madam Manager, Madam Finance Director, if we all want to pull those numbers, present it to council in our packets, we can certainly put on the agenda to have that discussion. You following that? Okay, and then, then that's not to say we don't need to have the broader discussion about how to justify the rates. Sometimes it feels like they're just arbitrarily a dollar more if you live out in the city. Right, and that, and, you know.
And as far as access control, there's other more sophisticated ways to control access than just an ID card. I mean, you can either buy like a fingerprint scan for fairly inexpensive, if that's one of, if that's really the issue, I mean, there, there are other ways to control access, if that's what we wanted to do.
Why don't we, why don't we let Phil make the call, I mean, we're hiring him to do a job, and he thinks the wristband works, let's go with the wristband, it'd be easy, cheap.
Yeah, I don't, um, I don't think anybody disagrees with the idea of the wristbands, I think we were getting into the more fundamental discussion about charging.
Well, if that's the case, then we've got to give everybody their money back, because we've got seniors, we've got people that come in and walk and lift weights and utilize the treadmills, so that was not the, my understanding, that wasn't the purpose when we first built it, and we've created a membership, so if that's something we're willing, but I mean.
Right, so I, that's, to answer Billy's question, we're looking at comprehensively approaching it now, because the question is, if it's a public facility, where did we get in the business of charging and why, and what, what revenue does it really generate?
Oh, you'd be surprised how many members you got out there, I'm not saying it's a cash count, but I mean, it's, it's something that they look forward to.
No, no, we're not talking about undoing it, what we're saying is now.
If you let one escape, then you, then you're going to have a problem letting them all escape.
Agreed, but we're, so we're saying that what if we didn't charge in-city residents to take aerobics class? Would we have twice the participation?
From seniors right now, it's five bucks, they think that's the best deal on earth.
I don't, I don't see where the, I don't see where the charge is the problem. I see the problem is like, uh, Bill is saying, people coming in and nobody knows when they walk out, and they just keep walking in and out. You know, if that's the case, I mean, you got a problem right there to start with, and people can't do two jobs at one time.
You're right.
So if you're going to do that, uh, as he said, and as Billy just said, you just need the wristband. If you don't want to wear the wristband, you don't want to go in the gym, and if you better go outside, you sign up. You go outside, you want to just walk out, you sign out, and if you, so if you come and make, then we know we got you all ready to come and make.
Alright, so let me just clarify, because I sense the, the, getting a little more complex. Phil has the wherewithal as a department head to set the policy of the wristband, am I wrong in that?
That's correct.
That is not a question before us, he can fix that on his own and determine come-and-go policy, we're, we're talking about the fee, so, um, tell me what the, the will of council is, do you want to vote the passes, do you want to, I mean, tell me what you guys want to do.
Can we carry it over to Tuesday and bring in the additional information on the fees that are collected?
If, if the will of council is to do that.
Increase the revenue, I'm not a voter, increase the revenue.
Alright, hold, so, I'll, I'll make a motion to, to carry it over to our next special meeting next Tuesday.
So, which one?
So there's a motion to carry over, there's a second, is there any discussion? And, and I would say if, if any of the information can be procured prior to the meeting and distributed to us, that would be beneficial. Look over the weekend or something, and then when we're going to discuss, we've got at least a little bit of information that we can base a discussion on.
We'll have it in your packets, it'll go out Friday afternoon.
Okay, alright, there's a motion on the floor to carry over, the second, we're in discussion, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of carrying over, resolution four fifteen oh two to the next meeting, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay?
Nay.
Nay.
To, uh, to oppose, uh, the resolution does carry it over. Okay, um, thank you, Phil. Um, item thirteen on the agenda is a motion to enter executive session to support South Carolina Code of Games Information Act thirty dash four dash seventy, paragraph face, uh, paragraph twenty-two, for receipt of legal advice to discuss legal updates on outstanding legal issues and pending lawsuits, discussions of negotiations, incidents to propose contractual negotiations, and discussion of city attorney's contract, is there such a motion?
Yes, sir.
Any discussion, hearing none, all in favor of carrying over by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay, we stand in executive session. Ladies and gentlemen, um, just to expiate the meeting tonight, because some of our members do have appointments, I'd ask that y'all please excuse yourself without, um, keeping, and council receiving, if you so come and we'll be there.